Good morning, Senators. Happy Friday. It's about 9:25, 9:26 a.m. I would just -- the committee in the hall is hereby reconvened just so that we can verify and recognize that in fact we do have a quorum. In the House we have Speaker Wampat, Senator Barnes, Senator Sinicless, Senator Underwood, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Tom Adda, Senator McCready, Senator Torres, Senator Morrison, Senator Espardon, and our fellow colleagues are also in transit right now. So just FYI. We left off on Bill Number 35-33 with Speaker Wampat's amendment which would add to the language of subsection 14102 on page three and insert the following phrase right after DOE. And which establishes an individual account for each eligible student to provide a personal incentive to plan and envision her or his future. The initiative shall begin with a $500 account designed to jumpstart student enrollment at our local public post-secondary institutions, the Guam Community College, and the University of Guam. Madam Speaker, if you would like to make any statements, otherwise I will entertain any discussion on this particular amendment. Any objections, amendments, or discussion? Yes. Senator Underwood, you're recognized on the proposed amendment.
So it reads, "The first-generation trust fund initiative shall provide for each eligible Guam Department of Education high school graduate a $500..." And I didn't get the next term. A $500... What was the next word after the $500?
Do you have a copy of the amendment, Senator Underwood? $500 account designed to jumpstart.
$500 account designed to jumpstart. Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate for me to make an amendment to that?
Yes, the chair would accept an amendment to the amendment.
And at this point, what I would like to exchange $500 account instead say a $500 scholarship towards registration, enrollment, and tuition fees at the University of Guam or the Guam Community College. And the reason why I am proposing to change that to a scholarship is because they're actually not getting an actual check. And so it's actually a scholarship. So that's my reason for the amendment.
Senator Underwood, you have a proposed amendment to the amendment by Speaker Wampat. If I can ask you to work with legal counsel, let's get that written up, or the clerk.
Okay, so it will read...
Okay, and so we will take a one-minute recess, please, to make sure that in fact we get that in writing, only because it continues to add. The challenge that the clerk, Senators, I hope you can bear with me, the challenge that the clerk has had in the last couple of days is being able to properly track amendments that were not provided in writing. So because this is more than one of several words, I would like to request your consideration. And Senator Underwood, as it applies to you, because you proffered your amendment, if I can get that in writing, please. Thank you very much. One-minute recess.
Senator Tom?
Good morning, Senators. A copy of Senator Underwood's proposed amendment has been circulated. So if you follow the language after the $500, it will read scholarship towards registration, enrollment, and tuition fees at the University of Guam or the Guam Community College period, and then everything subsequent to that would be deleted. Also, I need to... Okay, anyways. On the amendment by Senator Underwood, any discussion, questions, deletions, or amendments? Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I understand the concept and the intent, but I question whether it contradicts other parts of the bill. We're talking now about a scholarship and the concept that there's not going to be a check, as one of our retiring speakers mentioned. There isn't going to be a check necessarily, so it's a scholarship. So the concept is not hard cash, but a payment that is made from passage from one agency, DOE, to the university or GCC. But where I draw a question to the body is if you're looking at the concept of a scholarship, then it directly contradicts another section where we're talking about, and I believe it's section 14106, where we're talking about the fund being able to accept additional contributions from businesses and organizations. So you now have a concept of, we've discussed this as being individual accounts, which would arguably be individual bank accounts, with hard cash being deposited into the bank accounts. So what we might have to do, and I proffer, if the concept of, if 14102, the amendment as presented, were to pass, then I think that there would have to be a corresponding amendment to 14106, because the two concepts don't jive.
Senator Torres, I believe your concern is an issue that has been considered and addressed by the sponsor of the legislation. If I can entertain this particular amendment to the amendment, and then come back to you, and then she would explain exactly how she has addressed that concern, or how she anticipates to address that concern.
And then I would most likely have a proposed amendment then to section 14106.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. Excellent point. Any other discussion on the amendment to the amendment by, the amendment by Senator Underwood to the amendment sponsored by Speaker Wampat? Any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Torres, we will continue and deliberate and complete discussion on this particular amendment, and then I will entertain your concern. On Speaker Wampat's amendment as amended, please, Senators, I need to ensure that we understand that although it's not in the amendment as presented, the paragraph on page three, which is line eight to 13, would reflect that paragraph being deleted. Is that correct, Speaker Wampat? Is that your intent? Okay. So it would also include the deletion of lines eight to 13, because that would be inserted as proposed by Speaker Wampat in subsection 14102. So the amendment sponsored by Speaker Wampat is what you have before you as amended, and it also includes the deletion of lines eight to 13 on page three. So on that amendment by Speaker Wampat, any further discussion? Any objections? No objections? So ordered, Speaker Wampat. Please ensure the clerk gets a copy of your amendment, and it also reflects the deletion of lines eight to 13. Senator Torres, you're recognized with regards to...
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Speaker Wampat, you still have the floor.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much, and I want to thank our colleagues and, of course, the primary sponsor in improving on the language. What I would like to present to our colleagues, of course, because I know that there's been a lot of amendments that's been floating, and then the concern of Senator Torres in terms of making sure that the language is consistent throughout. And because of the many amendments, we have asked that legal counsel to take the entire bill and to rewrite it, rewrite it only for stylistic purposes, and to make sure that and other technical, you know, aspects that needs to be addressed, and to come up with a substituted bill incorporating all the amendments, putting them in the proper order where they should be. So there's some slight rearrangements of some of the amendments, and the whole language that we just passed, speaking to scholarship, has also been addressed now throughout the bill and not now just on the amendment that was just recently passed. So in essence, and if I may, on behalf of the author then, and I know that the clerks have, or reproduction office are printing right now that version, but I'm letting everybody know in advance, so as soon as it gets in here, I was going to ask for a brief recess so our members can get a copy of it, and then what it would be, the motion, would be then now to accept this substituted version with all the amendments, so everyone can see now the whole picture and how it's looking, how it has been arranged.
Okay, Senators, are we tracking Speaker Wampat's request? She is requesting, and she eventually is going to motion to adopt or to substitute a version of Bill Number 35-33 that incorporates and addresses all the amendments that were adopted yesterday by the body, and also would allow for the additional changes that Senator Torres has just alluded to with regards to the scholarship. As we entertain that particular measure, it's still being reproduced by the clerk's office, as we entertain that, I will ask Speaker Wampat to clarify any additional changes prior to entertaining the adoption or putting it to a vote in terms of adopting that measure. Because like Senator Torres alluded to, there were some concerns about if we change this to a scholarship, then there are other sections in the legislation that also needs to be amended to reflect the scholarship, not necessarily a trust fund. So on that note, I'm asking all of you to please read through the document. I will give you ample time. We will take a 10-minute recess. Reproduction should be done. Speed reading 101. I understand we have several educators who are excellent at that, and all of my colleagues. We've been doing that for the past week. So please understand that Speaker Wampat has a current copy that incorporates all the amendments, and it will be distributed shortly, to all of you, that incorporates all the amendments that were adopted and accepted by the body yesterday. And then I will request that she or the sponsor of the legislation also highlight any additional changes or insertions that reflect the two amendments that were adopted this morning before I put it to a vote. So this committee will take a 10-minute recess. Good morning again, senators. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Chairman, prior to recessing, because we were waiting for the copies of the, all of the amendments that have been made and we worked with legal counsel to rearrange them in proper places, because we would say, like for example, a new section, so they'll have to determine what that new section would be. So in essence, what we have is a clean copy now of all the amendments that have been made up to this morning and then, and to show again the consistency throughout, where the newest change was scholarship on only one section, but now it's reflected in the other section. So first of all, I'd like to just make the motion to accept this clean copy and then I would walk our colleagues through it so that then it would, especially those who proffered an amendment and that it had passed, to make sure that they're all in place.
Please note, I will accept your motion, Madam Speaker, to accept and consider substituting the version that you have before you to this bill with a star, Bill number thirty-five dash thirty-three. Please note, Madam Speaker, that there was no comprehensive motion that would address Senator Torres's issue with regards to making it a scholarship. So, senators, as we adopt this, please read and listen intently to Speaker Wampat's explanation because it would address Senator Torres's initial concerns this morning.
And of course, then based on what's here, then naturally, they have the opportunity again to, you know, offer amendments.
Okay, senators, there's been a motion to adopt the version with the star on the top left, please, by Speaker Wampat. On that motion, Speaker Wampat, if you can walk us through with any of the changes and additions, other than those that were adopted by this body just twenty minutes ago.
That's included.
And yesterday. Okay, so other than those, if you can just guide, guide the body through this particular proposal before I put it to a vote. Speaker Wampat, you have the floor.
The motion is to accept first.
A motion, I said accepted.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to accept for purposes of discussion to substitute the original legislation with this particular proposal, which reads, "Bill number thirty-five dash thirty-three, C O R, is corrected by the primary sponsor and substituted by the Committee on Early Learning, Juvenile Justice, Public Education, and First Generation Initiatives." It should read, and as further substituted by the committee on the whole. But Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. So, I mean, please bear with me, but at the very onset, that legal counsel normally does is that the title, there is just a slight change there of the removal, I mean, the adding of the word off the Guam Code, so that's something that's so technical. And then when you go into the legislative findings, that's basically the same as what was in the original. The very first amendment is on the second page, which is Section Two, which was proffered by Senators Nicholas.
Okay, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, just so that everyone is following, we'll go page by page. Any questions on statements by Speaker Wampat on page one? The title? Okay, page two.
And then, page two is the amendment that we accepted, and that's the entire, the language for Section Two, where the senator also did some rearrangement of that particular section, which is fourteen-one-on-one. And then the next page, page three.
Any questions on page two? I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, if you can bear with me, just so that.
Sorry.
So that we don't have to revert back to any additional questions. Senator Espada, on page two, any questions?
That was the one that we accepted, was Senators Nicholas's amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, that was already passed. And now the next page, on page three, which is fourteen-one-on-two, which is exactly what we just went through, where the, I had proffered an amendment and then it was also, what should I say, amended by the primary author, and that was accepted. What you notice here, however, is exactly now, because there was that question about that Senator Torres had, which was the individual accounts, and we don't have the individual accounts. If you read the language now, is that "As an incentive program to encourage G D U A high school students to pursue post-secondary learning, the First Generation Trust Initiative shall, shall be provided for each eligible Guam D O E high school graduate, a five-hundred-dollar scholarship to be used towards registration enrollment tuition fees at U O G and G C C." So the individual now that, in terms of, and that would take us into, okay, well, anyway, that's what it is. It's not an individual account.
Speaker Wampat, Senator Torres has a question.
Speaker Wampat, can you, Mr. Chairman, can, can the speaker please refer to the specific lines that she's reading, because I can't follow exactly where she's referencing.
On page three?
On page, page num, page number and line number.
Okay, so page three, and it should be lines twenty-one to twenty-five.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Senator Torres.
May I, may I direct the speaker's attention to line six through eight? I'm confused and, yeah.
Six to eight?
It appears that the, the reference to individual accounts and the amount is still included.
Okay, so, all right, so, hey, where's legal counsel? Okay, there you are. Okay, so then you're right.
That was part, just Senator Torres, thank you very much for that observation. That was part and parcel of Speaker Wampat's amendment that was just adopted earlier. So if we can ask the clerk to make that correction and reflect that.
So that will be, you're right, so.
So if I, if I may.
So it's five to, to ten.
Line five to ten, that's correct.
It's five to ten.
So lines five through ten are deleted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on page three?
Point of inquiry, Mr. Chairman, do we already adopt this substitute?
Yes, we did.
No, 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 we are discussing it.
We're just discussing it.
And I will put it to a vote after Speaker Wampat explains page by page.
But that deletion was already done, yes, and, and, yes.
Thank you, Senators Nicholas. Speaker Wampat, you still have the floor. We're still on page three.
Okay, so then, the one important thing that I want our colleagues to look at is, of course, lines twenty to twenty-five, which we just recently adopted this morning. Okay, then we go to page four.
Any questions on page three? Not page four, Speaker Wampat.
And then on page four, this was, this particular page is that several things that legal counsel did in terms of stylistic changes and some technical changes, just making sure that, you know, that, that some sections, like for example, where it talked about the, the, where my lines thirteen to fifteen, that where it says there that, that that was deleted from another section to be placed, you know, properly, to make it flow in this particular section, so.
From another section to this section?
You're right.
Or from another paragraph?
I mean, this is the page, this is the page where there are movement, that, that certain sections have been moved, so that it'll flow well, rather, further up into the bill, rather than on the back of the bill.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Senator Espada, state your point of order.
Mr. Chair, I thought that the, this version that was supposed to come out was supposed to be basically a copy of the bill as amended, as all the amendments were made.
Yes, but what, but we went one step further, of course, is just getting it ready the way we normally would, I'm sorry, when we want to, where we, and a motion was made at the very beginning, that we allow legal counsel to do the stylistic changes and any technicalities throughout the bill, that the language would be consistent.
I don't remember ever that motion being.
So in doing this, yes, that's always done at the beginning of, of, on motions, that we, that's a standard motion that we always authorize legal counsel to do.
At the beginning of session.
When they're getting ready, yes, at the beginning of session and also for then, for, to allow them to engross bills. Otherwise, there's, they can't even start or begin to engross without that motion. And that's, that's a standard motion that we do.
Mr. Chair.
Can I ask, we defer to the majority lead then?
Senator Espada, you still have the floor and your point of order? Are you done with your, stating your point of order?
I believe somebody else would like to.
Okay, Speaker Wampat, Senator Spishel.
Actually, Mr. Chair, it's the sponsor, any member's prerogative to substitute the bill at any point in the process. So I believe what's happening here is the sponsor took the liberty to substitute the bill based on those conversations that were had during the recess and the legal counsel, as the speaker pointed out, was instructed with the sponsor to try to make everything work. So I, although some believe that this may be an update of what all the amendments that took place, this is not. This is just the sponsor taking the liberty to work with the legal counsel to present another version. So the motion on the floor is to substitute. So if this is adopted, as you know, we go with this version.
Yes.
Thank you for your point of information, Senator Spishel. The issue here at hand, at least with the chair, is I want to ensure that everyone understands what, aside from the amendments that have already been acted upon, that everyone understands any deviations from that, from the existing legislation that we are entertaining at the moment. So Speaker Wampat, we're still on page four, you have the floor.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Senator Nicholas, state your point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, just for the sake of us making sure that everything is happening systematically the way it's supposed to, for example, on page three, lines five to ten, if we're entertaining this as a substitute version, then technically, we do need to amend lines five to ten out. But before we can amend lines five to ten out, we need to adopt the substitute version for discussion.
Actually, I'm sorry, Senators Nicholas, just for clarification purposes, that was part and parcel of the adoption of Speaker Wampat's, that's why I stated it twice, of Speaker Wampat's amendment. I stated it that although it's not reflected in the amendment document, that it would also be inclusive of deleting lines eight to thirteen on page three of the bill that we were discussing. So I clarified that for purposes prior to the voting and that's why, that's, that's a mispresentation in terms of this legislation, because it should have been struck out already. So it's, it's a point well taken, but it was.
Just to, just to make sure it's very clear, we're entertaining this as a substitute bill and we are disregarding lines five to ten as we entertain it.
Because that was an action on the part of the previous body, yes.
It already passed.
So it was recognized that it was deleted. But Senator Nicholas has an excellent point, and also it was shared with Senator Torres, that because it is part of this substituted version, that it would be appropriate to.
Delete it now.
It needs to be officially amended.
All right, I understand. So, so you want to entertain then, might as well.
Would you, Senator Wampat, would you like to you to?
Well, just on my point of order, Mr. Chairman, if we're just discussing the, the document and it hasn't yet been accepted by the body.
That's correct.
Then we can, we can discuss it. I'm just pointing out that when it does finally get accepted, we do need to formally amend that language out still.
Yeah, okay.
Then I stand corrected, Senator Torres. So on that note, I apologize, it's, it's still incorporated here, so. incorporated here, so if we accept this version, then unless there's a motion to delete it prior, so I stand corrected on that issue. Speaker Wapat, you still have the floor. One page?
On page four, and Section 14-104, the word there, eligible, was deleted to all DOE students, because with the new amendments that were provided yesterday, basically saying that at any time when the students come in, they are a DOE student, and the eligibility, there's no criteria now set where you would have to start in the ninth grade and be there continuously. So, and that was the logic for just removing eligible then to all. So, that was the change in that section.
But that was removed by the legal counsel?
And that was the recommendation by legal counsel. Yes, all these that we're doing really are all recommendations by legal counsel, you know, based on a lot of the amendments where we were discussing yesterday.
Okay, so that's the only change on page four?
Yes, for the, for all.
Any questions, comments on page four? Senator Espada, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I was trying to pay attention. I thought we were talking about 14-104. I thought that's where our attention was directed to, and then we're talking about eligibility requirements.
No, no, that, what?
And so, I just wanted to understand, I mean, you know, again, this is moving quite fast, considering this is now a whole different version of the bill with, you know, and again, I give credit to, to legal counsel and working with the sponsor, but as we go through this, again, this is not, no longer the bill as it was when we were entertaining it yesterday, along with the amendments that were made to it. So, to proceed as quickly as we are, referring to 14-104, and then with no mention of eligibility, and now we're talking about eligibility, which comes under 14-105, I just ask that we perhaps slow down a little bit to understand what really is going on, because we don't have any notes of what the changes were, and maybe the Speaker in explaining it does in working with the clerk and the legal counsel. So, what she has before us is not what's before us, what she has for her is not what's before us in terms of what were those amendments that were made to this bill. So, I would just ask that.
Senator Espada, your concern is well taken, that's why I asked the Speaker if we could annotate page by page, so that it would reflect all the amendments and any additional changes that were incorporated stylistically or legally by legal counsel. So, that's, that's the purpose of, of making sure that we go page by page, and we all understand what any additional changes are.
Right, but, Mr. Chair, if I may, I would, it seems to me that the Speaker has perhaps more detailed information on the sheet as she explains it, and we don't, right?
You're right, and I understand you're right, and I should.
So, to be able to understand what she's saying, I mean, all we can do is follow along and listen to it, as opposed, she has a hard copy in front of her, which tells her exactly, and I think that's not very fair for a discussion in terms of what we're really looking at.
Okay, let me, let me do this.
So, let me do it for this one particular section, just so that, because I, and he's correct, and I should go slower. So, then, 14-104, that's a new section with this title, Notification of Students, and that was adopted, and it was a new section in which Senator Nicholas had proffered, which was 14-113, Notification. So, that, that was passed, was moved then and renumbered to 14-104. So, is that much clearer now? It was 14-113, if you look at your amendment that was, that we passed, that was proffered by Senator Nicholas.
Anything else on page four that you would like to highlight? Speaker Wapat?
No, I mean, I just wanted to give that reference point, then, because the numbers, you're right, because remember earlier, I did say that based on, and the way this has always been done, is that we allow legal counsel to find where it'd be best, what section it would be, and where best to place it in the bill, so it flows, and that's what was done. And maybe, I guess, and I apologize, but we were kind of thinking ahead here by actually fixing it up, just like the way we would do to get it engrossed, and that's what, this is then, that version of a near-engrossed bill.
Thank you, Speaker Wapat. Any questions or comments on page four?
Senator, you okay? Found that sheet?
Well, I mean, in terms on the questions on page four, again, I'll reserve any questions at this point, but again, I just want to voice my concern that this is a totally different bill, you know, and there have been changes to it, and we haven't been even given a chance that she's explaining it, we haven't even read it yet, you know? I mean, because I was on the assumption that the substituted version, as it was going to be presented, would be to incorporate all the, all the amendments that were made yesterday, and the way I look at it, the amendments that were made yesterday, and a good example would be the Senator Nicholas's amendment, which was going to be for 14-113, no longer is existing in here, except it's renumbered. So, to follow along and to say, can you accept this, is, I think, a disservice to us as we discuss this bill moving forward, because this is not just a reiteration of the bill from yesterday with the amendments included in. Now, we've moved things around, and we haven't even had a chance to take a good look at it. We're explaining it before we even read it.
So, Senator, they.
And I don't think that's right.
So, Mr. Chairman, then, why do we take a 10-minute recess to allow our colleagues then to read this substituted version? There's nothing different from it, other than some stylistic changes and moving amendments further up, so, but the content, the language, you know, it's just, other than just, you know, grammatical corrections being made, that I allow, I'm asking for a 10-minute recess to allow our colleagues then to read this new substituted bill.
So noted, and then, as we return, we will go, return back to page four and continue our conversation. Good afternoon, good morning, senators. The committee on the whole is now back in session. On the motion to accept the substituted version with the star, Bill Number 35-33, I'm going to put that to a vote, and I want to thank a number of senators in the room who have consented to, to, starting with a clean copy and then going page by page. On the motion to adopt Bill Number 35-33-COR with the star, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Thank you. Okay, senators. Okay, we will proceed, page by page, not section by section, but page by page, and if there's any issues, please, we have a clean copy. Thank you very much, senators, for allowing the process to proceed. Okay, on page one. Any questions, comments, or issues? If anyone requests to revert back to previous pages, we will enter, I will entertain your request upon the conclusion of the entire document. So, page one. No questions, comments? This is already adopted. Yes, Senator, you're recognized.
May I suggest, maybe the prime sponsor walk us through what the changes are on? That's why I'm trying something different, I'm trying to ask the prime sponsor.
No, you're going to confuse, you're going to confuse anyone more. Okay, why do we do this? Senators, because this incorporates a lot of the amendments that already were discussed and adopted yesterday, we will go page by page. Senator Spishio, I appreciate your recommendation, and then if any, there's a suggestion that we revert back to a previous page, upon the conclusion of the entire document, I will allow for that. Okay, so I think that that would provide each of us an opportunity to be able to further review it and bring up any concerns. On page one, any questions, comments, issues, concerns, deletions? Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized. Any questions, comments, or issues on page two? Page three, Senator Torres or Senator Nicholas, either of you are recognized on page three, please. Senator Torres?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose an amendment to Section 14-101, lines five to 10. I propose that lines five to 10 be struck from this Section 14-101.
On the motion by Senator Torres on page three, to strike out the lines five to 10, Elias Satura, hereby, all the way to University of Guam. Any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Torres, you still have the floor, on page three.
Thank you, no further comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Any further suggestions or amendments or deletions on page three? Senator Frank Blas Jr., you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, with regards to Section 14-102, actually, line 20, which, and it says, "which shall be administered by the Guam Department of Education," I think that yesterday there was discussion of the possibility of hiring or looking somebody. I want to make sure that this language is not restrictive, and so I'd like to be able to prefer that after Guam Department of Education, or its designee.
On the proposed amendment on line 20, Senator Blas?
Line 20.
To insert the words right after Guam Department of Education, or its designee.
Or its designee.
Any questions or discussions on that particular amendment to subsection 14-102? Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
I just wanted to comment that we actually addressed that on page four, where we give, line 11, may enter, where we say DOE Superintendent may enter into contracts to obtain investment advice.
Yeah, and that's consistent with that language, okay? So, just for the consistency sake.
Thank you, Senator Underwood, Senator Blas. Senator Torres, you had your hands raised? On the amendment proffered by Senator Frank Blas Jr. on page three, line 20, right after Guam Department of Education, DOE, to insert the words, "or its designee." Any objection? No objections? So ordered. Any further discussion on page three?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Section 14-102, there is hereby established the initiative, "which shall be administered by Guam Department of Education," or its designee. I guess, in thinking about this, one of the issues, and I know that in the following pages, that the 5% of whatever would be in the trust fund would go towards the administration of this scholarship fund, and that's essentially what it is. And I guess, in my mind, is if, if DOE is the one who's administering it, and the question probably should have been asked yesterday while they were here, right, what they would perhaps anticipate the cost would be, in terms of how many people would they be able to, do they have the in-house capability right now? Would they require a different kind of software and the cost associated with that? And we can all extrapolate it into, well, it's going to be, whatever it's going to be, it has to be within 5% of, and I just have a concern with that, in that the challenges before DOE are tremendous with, in terms of administering its mission for all 33,000 students, and then we add this new initiative for them to manage and handle. And again, I just have a concern of whether, you know, what the cost would be and whether they can do it effectively. And again, I raise that just for, just to throw it out, because it does play in my mind, ultimately, when it comes to the vote, whether I do trust that that exactly will happen, right?
Thank you very much, Senator Espada, your concern is so noted. Senator, if you notice, Senator Espada has transitioned to page four. So, senators, we are on page four, and he did allude to the 5% component on line 15. Senator Underwood, and then Senator Nicholas. Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, when we had the Superintendent of Education here yesterday, he, he has reviewed the bill thoroughly, and so this is in response to the previous speaker. He has reviewed the bill thoroughly, and he had noted that that 5% would be adequate, that they would be able to handle this, and that they would be able to handle this, and given that they are going to be given the option to contract it out, that they can handle it, in addition to all the things that they're doing, their responsibilities.
Thank you very much, Senator Underwood. Senator Siniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of amendments on page four, line 13, 14. The language currently reads, "Administrative costs relative to the management of the fund shall be limited to 5% of the total portfolio." I would like to amend that to read, "All aggregate costs relative to the fund shall be limited to 5% of the total portfolio." And the reason for that is there are different kinds of costs that could be associated with this fund, not just administrative, and not just management. There could be costs, investment advisory fees, consulting fees, expense ratios if the funds are invested into a mutual fund. There could be fees for transactions, every buy or sell of a security, for example. And so, while the way that the money is invested is going to be determined by the rules and regs that the Department of Education adopts, I think it's good for us to codify that regardless of what those rules and regulations incorporate, the aggregate cost relative to the fund shall be limited to 5%. So when you add up investment expenses, when you add up transaction fees, when you add up expense ratios, when you add up management fees and consulting fees, attorney fees even, the total fees, whatever is associated with the fund, shall not exceed 5%. Because right now, the existing language just limits it to administrative costs relative to the management of the fund, and I like it to read, "All aggregate costs relative to the fund shall be limited to 5% of the total portfolio."
On Senator Siniklas' amendment on page four, lines 13 and 14, to delete the words "administrative costs" to the management, and insert the words "all aggregate costs relative to the fund." Is that correct? "To the fund shall be limited to 5%." No. You would delete "administrative costs" to the management, and then insert the phrase, "All aggregate costs relative to the fund shall be limited to 5%." On the amendment proffered by Senator Siniklas, any discussion? Senator Espada, you're recognized. On the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like it. The, again, and I understand what he's attempting to do to keep it within the 5% of the total portfolio. The question in my mind, and again, I have no amendment, but I need to at least put it out there, is that will that be sufficient? Because when, you know, I mean, the good Senator proffered the amendment, I started identifying all these extra costs that we haven't anticipated. And so now, if we, I mean, and I can go with all the aggregate costs, it brings us now to the question of whether 5% is going to be enough. Because when you start talking about investment fees, you start talking about all the other things that the good Senator mentioned, you have to wonder, is that really within the scope? And if, of outside services? If it's not, we're almost forcing him to stay in-house without going out and getting good advice, one way or the other, because if outside advice would need to be hired and we would incur those costs, and we cannot meet that because of the 5% cap, then it forces in-house. And the question then begs, is that what is being contemplated by DOE? And we don't know that without them being here.
Thank you, Senator Espada. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized. On the amendment.
Maybe I missed something when I ran out to... But it's, I thought that it's, since it's just going to be a $500 scholarship, and there's not going to be 1,800 every year individual accounts created, that there really is only one corpus that's going to be invested. And there, so with one corpus, a 5% would seem to be reasonable, if not excessive. And so, you know, if it was 1,800 every year that you're adding, and it's going to be 1,836, and then 44, it just seems 4,400 accounts, then that would be a lot. But since it's just going to be one account of 550, 1.5, 1.7, that's going to be invested, and the amounts released at the end to the universities, I don't know that it would cost that much.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Siniklas, you had your hands raised?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Speaker is correct. I do have another amendment that I'll proffer after this one with respect to that. But the 5%, I think would be, I think, I don't think that this would force anything to stay in-house. I think what it would do is it would force anybody who's bidding to look at it and say, okay, this is what the projected amount is going to be, and this is the projected fee that I'm going to be able to generate from this, so do I want to bid on this or not? And based on my experience, having come from the financial industry, a 5% threshold is a very, very workable threshold for any investment advisor to be able to determine if they want to bid on this or not. If I was still in the industry, knowing that I was going to be managing a fund with a value of 2.2 million plus, and I could charge a 5% fee that would incorporate all of the expense ratios and everything else, I would definitely bid for that. As a matter of fact, oftentimes, these kind of portfolios are managed for a lot less. Sometimes the expense ratios are not factored in to the bid. And what we're doing here is we're just making sure that the total cost of the portfolio isn't going to exceed 5%.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. Senator Espada?
I appreciate the input by both previous speakers, and I fully understand that the 5% does fall within what an investment advisor could work within, but then we're still not taking consideration the other costs, because now we're talking aggregate costs. And just to, for my, perhaps just for me, be able to articulate out loud what my concern would be, and for my own benefit, is that I think that the, one of the previous speakers had mentioned, well, we're only talking about 1,800 accounts, it's not a new 1,800. I beg to differ, because every school year, there's going to be 1,800 new, at least 1,800 new people put into the system. You know, again, their accounts would have to be created. And it's not money going into the account, it's more probably a list of names that are saying, okay, these people are now in the system, they would become eligible for the scholarship at the end, right? On top of it, every year, there will be some new students coming in that they would have to add, and then on top of it, at graduation, those extra 1,800 then be deleted, not all of them, some may be retained, and all that good stuff, for whatever purpose. So when you take the aggregate costs, right, we're not talking just about the cost that would be to any outside investors, but internally as well, in terms of managing the whole process of making sure it gets done properly. And again, I just put that out, and I'm trying to figure it out in my own head, how to go forward with this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Espada. Vice Speaker Cruz, on the amendment.
Actually, I think it would be a lot easier for everybody to understand, since we've changed it now to anybody that graduates from DOE school, we don't have to worry about how many came in every freshman year. It's now, the question is, how many are going to be graduating, and how many are going to be going on at the end? If there's 1,800 graduates, of the 1,800, whether or not 1,200 or 1,500 of them are going on to GCC and UOG, and that would be that all they would have to worry about. They just have to worry about this one corpus, this one portfolio, to make sure that it grows, so that though it only really could have covered 1,100 students, that somehow it grows enough to be able to cover 1,200 or 1,300 students if it's successful and incentivizes more students to decide to go on to school. So it really is only one corpus.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. Any further discussion or deliberation on the proposed amendment? Once again, on page four, line 13 and 14, delete the words "administrative costs relative to the management of," and insert "all aggregate costs relative to the fund shall be limited to 5% of the total portfolio." On the amendment by Senator Siniklas, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator McCready, you're recognized on page...
I still have the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Or Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Another amendment on line 14, to strike the words "be limited to," and change it to the words "not exceed," because I interpret "limited to" meaning it could be interpreted to be, that they are required to pay 5%. So strike "be limited to" and put "fund shall not exceed 5%."
On the amendment by Senator Siniklas, to delete the words "be limited to," and insert on page 14, line 14, page four, "not exceed." Any objections? No objections? So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Another amendment on line 17. This section here is a rewording of the original intent to try and make sure that we're notifying students of what's available and what they need to do to be able to avail of the benefit. I'm just concerned that we've changed it to all GDOE students as opposed to all eligible students, and there's some discussion back and forth about, do we want to be giving a notice to some students and not to all students? And what if they become eligible later, if they had only known about it sooner? And so, just to clean that up, I would like us to just make sure that if we're notifying all the students, that the notification is non-binding, because I don't want us to be telling a student, you may be, you know, you are eligible, you may be eligible for a $500 benefit if you graduate, only for them to find out that they're not, and then they come back and they say, you've been telling me this for the last four years, how come I don't have it? You know, so in my mind, I can only have two conclusions, either one, we limit notification only to eligible students, or two, we make the notification non-binding. And so, my amendment is going to go towards the latter, unless dialogue indicates that we should probably lean towards the former. And so I'd like to make an amendment to strike the word "notified" on line 17, and replace it with "provided a non-binding notification." So the sentence will read, "All GDOE students shall be provided a non-binding notification by GDOE."
On the amendment by Senator Siniklas, to delete the word on line 17, page four, "notified," and insert "provided a non-binding notification." On the amendment, Vice Speaker Cruz, you had your hands raised?
I think there's only two eligibility criteria, citizenship and graduation. So unless the student, and hopefully the school knows who aren't citizens, unless they are, if they are citizens, they should be told that if you stay in school, and if you graduate from this public high school, or a public high school, you will be eligible for this amount. Not that I'm trying to discourage them from moving to a private school, but to tell them, it will only be eligible to you if you graduate from a public high school. And I think somehow that's got to be conveyed to the students, that it's, but...
Thank you, Senator... Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Yeah, I also wanted to note that the reason why this was inserted was we wanted to encourage the students by notifying them. And so when we start giving them notification that it's non-binding, then that kind of takes away the spirit of, you know, giving them the incentive to keep going on and graduating.
Thank you, Senator Underwood. Senator Torres, on the amendment.
I recalled at the onset of the discussion of the bill in its original form, when it was contemplated, that it was an individualized account, that could have varied account amounts because of contributions that were allowed in, that that was the purpose of the notification, so that you would give everyone an idea of their growing account balance, if they had contributions into it from private things, or through service with businesses that contributed a dollar amount for service and the like. The requirement to provide annual notification, I think, is a little cumbersome, especially if this bill now is, in essence, a $500 flat fee scholarship. It's a flat scholarship, you know, an amount not to exceed. So I question whether the notification as contemplated originally that led to the insertion of this, if the thought process is really no longer valid, and if, in fact, we ought to require ourselves to notify them at the commencement, because ultimately, they can be notified that there's a $500 scholarship upon graduation. That number's not going to vary in any way. So there's, generally notifications are of changes, or, you know, changes in status, or the like. So perhaps, perhaps there might be consideration about whether notification in the form as proposed here is even necessary, and if it's overly cumbersome.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Siniklas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on the two retiring speakers, first to address the most recent one. The purpose of the notification isn't just to affirm what the amount is, but it's also to inspire and remind the student that they have that opportunity available to them. The intent is not just for them to know how much it is, but for them to be inspired and to look towards post-secondary higher education as a viable alternative. And we're hoping that that notification will help them to be more serious in school, help them to take their studies more seriously, their attendance more seriously, their behavior more seriously. And if, you know, a simple piece of paper at the beginning of the school year can really kick that off for them, and set them on the right foot every year that they're in school, it's a very small initial commitment to make in order to just boost the morale of our students. We talk a lot about, you know, morale for employees, but student morale is also a very big thing. And being notified every, at the beginning of every year, that, hey, you know, you have this amount available to you when you get out to go to UOG or GCC, that could really have a real good positive impact on morale. So that's the reason why the notification would still have value, it's not just about providing them with an awareness of what their balances are. On another note, referencing the speaker before, we do have a lot of students in our system who are not citizens. And so the question becomes, are we going to provide, because right now the language is, "All GDOE students shall be notified by GDOE at the commencement of each year and on graduation of the amount potentially available." So we're going to be giving a whole bunch of students who are not eligible under this act, a notification that they may get 500 bucks when they get out of here for UOG or GCC. So maybe we, and what I'm trying to do is, if we want to tell all the students that, because, don't get me wrong, by telling them that they will be... So you want to add eligible? Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to withdraw my initial amendment.
On the withdrawal of the amendment, okay, Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And instead of my previous suggestion, I'm going to just suggest that we add after the word "all," an amendment to add the word "eligible."
On the amendment by Senator Siniklas, on line 17, page four, to insert, right after "all," insert the word "eligible." Any objections? Any comments? Deliberation?
I see the legal counsel is conversing at the moment.
I do have another amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Are you going to withdraw your amendment?
Oh, no, no, I'm maintaining my amendment for now.
Okay. So on the amendment by Senator Siniklas, insert the word "eligible" between "all" and GDOE, line 17. No objections? So ordered. Speaker, Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
I think there was somebody ahead of me for making an amendment. I wanted to make an amendment in 14-105.
Yes, someone is ahead of you. Senator Siniklas still has the floor. Yes, Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just another amendment on page four, line 24, just technical amendment, after the word "residence," strike the period. The word "residence," strike the period.
Okay. On the amendment, no objections? So ordered. Senator McCready on page four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a possible amendment, and this is a three-prong approach amendment. This would be on Section 14-105, and that would be on page five, line one. And, you know, the reason why I want to proffer an amendment is because the language on the lower third of this would be the one year of graduating from high school. And I think what we're trying to do is, we're trying to encourage our kids to stay educated, stay in school. And I think the one year might be a little too long of a wait. I know none of us in here tell our kids to wait a year before you go to college. We want them to, while they're fresh and they're still in school, we want them to keep learning. So I don't think it would be rushing them, but more encouraging them. So I don't think it would be rushing them, but more encouraging them. The second would be the availability of funds. And my concern is if you don't register for this scholarship in the first semester, it might not be there in the final semester. So that one year may end up hurting the child or the student who wanted to enroll in this thing. And then the final one that I think is just as important is tracking purposes. I think we'll be able to track this better if we avail this scholarship by the first semester. And so, I will yield the question to the author before I proffer the amendment, if some of these concerns of mine are legitimate. And if so, I think the availability of this scholarship should be, instead of one year, should be the next fall semester after graduation.
Senator McCready, rather than having her yield to your request for a response, if we can get a copy? Senator McCready?
Yes, I've spoken to the author about this. I showed her a copy.
Okay. Did you want to share it with the rest of the body?
I will do that now, sir.
One minute recess.
Mr. Speaker, I, Mr. Chairman, I hesitate doing this, but I think it's imperative that we do it. I'd like to make an amendment that on section 14-105, the requirement for eligibility be just graduation from a Guam Department of Education school, drop the citizenship and even the permanent residency. The reason I do this, I suggest this, Mr. Chairman, is the bill is entitled First Generation. We have a whole series of FAS citizens who are here as first generation. If we don't encourage them or inspire them to get an education, they will continue to be non-productive members of this community. We want them to become productive members of this community. There was an issue raised with me when I raised the question initially about how about if they just come here in their senior year? Well, fine, they're going to live here, they're going to be a generation here. If we don't educate them or encourage them to go to school, they're not going to contribute. If the intent of this legislation truly is to affect first generation, then many people, and with all due respect, including the author of this legislation, was first generation. And we've got to encourage all of them so that some of them may be the first FAS Superintendent of Education.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz has an amendment to, on page 4, lines 23 and 24, to delete the words "a US citizen or permanent resident and." So the phrase would read on 23 and 24, "A GDOE graduate must be enrolled in a GDOE public high school at the time of graduation..." Should read "at the time of graduation." Period. But I'll await any proposed amendment. Bottom, Vice Speaker Cruz's amendment. Senator Torres, you're recognized.
I would like to commend the retiring speaker on a very well-thought and fair approach to this. One of my main concerns initially with this whole bill was the equal protection clause and the opportunity for as many students to qualify for such an advantage and for an incentive. And so, I applaud the good retiring speaker on considering this and opening it up. And I believe that it addresses many of my concerns initially with the equal protection clause, and I certainly support this amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. On the proposed amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
I certainly, I certainly support the intent of ensuring that we have, provide equal opportunity for all, no matter what their resident status is. But I also want to bring up the notion that a lot of the scholarships, you know, what we're providing here is $500. I mean, $500 worth of scholarship. But the other scholarships that are available that will supplement this may require being that they are permanent resident or a citizen. All I'm saying is that if we open it up and our target is really those students who may not be able to afford going into the, you know, post-secondary, that the $500 may not be enough for them to actually enroll and be in post-secondary for the rest of the year. For example, even with the merit, I believe the merit scholarship, they require them to be citizens and/or permanent residents. I am not sure about the Pell Grants, whether that's also a require... So that's basically just all that I wanted to note.
Thank you, Senator Underwood. Vice Speaker Cruz, and then Senator McCready, and then Senator Blatche.
Even more reason for inclusion. We've got to give them at least the first 500 to pay for the fees if we want them to go. It's true, unfortunately, the merit scholarship does, precludes them. That may be something we'll have to deal with later, because it really is unfair that some of them are graduating from our high schools and are in the top 10 and are not getting merit scholarships. But the Pell scholarships, as I understand it, are FAS citizens are eligible for it. And so, if we want to encourage as many people as possible, especially those who are first generational, who will be the first in their families to go to college, we've got to do everything possible. This 500 is not going to pay the $700 first class of the university. But this is something to inspire them to aspire to that position, so...
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator McCready, you're recognized. On the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I agree with the retiring speaker and his proposed, did you make the amendment? Did you make an amendment? And his proposed amendment, his proffer of the amendment. You know, when you take out all the dollars and cents and you wipe clean the slate of just the opportunity, that is what Guam is known for. I know, I'm not from the Federated States, but I also was a transplant here, so I moved here from another island. But if it wasn't for the opportunity given by the people of Guam, yet I could not be doing what I'm doing today. So I think that's why this island and its people is the melting pot of the South Pacific, is because what they offer with no strings attached. And the only thing we're asking, as me as a lawmaker, is when you give, you get, and when you learn something, you teach it. And this is what I think the vice speaker is trying to proffer here. And I know that my good senator to my left, who authored this bill, is in the same predicament as I am, as well as a couple others here. We weren't born here. Well, we came here and the opportunity was given to us, and we have become productive members of society. So I think as citizens now of Guam, and as someone who wants to give back, I think it's only fair that we do so. And so, I totally agree with the vice speaker, and I thank him for allowing us to vote on his amendment as well.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready. Senator Frank Blatche, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, I'm sitting here and I'm like, this is interesting. When I brought the same, a similar issue up yesterday, you know, about eligibility, and, you know, eligibility was restricted to those, you know, from Guam DOE. There was a whole discussion here about parity and about equal and giving them everybody's fair chance and opportunity. What's changed? And what's the difference? So, you know... So, you know, and I appreciate, and, you know, I have to agree with the speaker in principle that we have to provide everybody the opportunity. But what's changed? And so, I just need to bring that out for food for thought. We had this discussion yesterday. And I was wrong.
Thank you, Senator Frank Blas Jr. Any other discussion on the proposed amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz? Once again, it's on page four, line 23 and 24, to delete the words "a U.S. citizen or a permanent resident and." So it would read, "Graduate must be enrolled in a GDOE public high school at the time of graduation." On the amendment, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Just for the information of the body, that that particular statement, sentence on line 24 and 25 does not really read too well, based on the last five words of that sentence on line 25, because it now reads, "A GDOE graduate must be enrolled in a GDOE public high school at the time of graduation from a GDOE high school."
That's why, that's the amendment I was going to proffer, Mr. Chair, but go ahead. That Frank Blas Augen Jr. can take it from Frank Flores Blas Jr.
Senator Blas has an amendment on the floor, line 25, to delete the words "from a GDOE high school."
Yes, sir.
Any objection? No objection?
I still.
Thank you, Senator Blas.
Okay.
Senator Blas, you recognize.
In continuation of section 14105, but this goes on to page five. A line one, where it says, "That student's account." Correct me if I'm wrong, but there was supposed to be a discussion with regards to wanting to stay away from student and individual accounts? Page five, line one. "That student's account."
Senator Blas, do you have an amendment?
So, I think that that should basically read, further if the student's fund is not used within, by the, by fall or spring semester after graduating from high school. The money's... We have to close that sentence. We have to close that sentence. But my whole concern here is the utilization of that student's account. Okay? And so, the funds will be reverted, yeah, you know, the money will be reverted back to the fund. I look to the legal counsel to be able to provide the language necessary to be able I'd like to strike out, you know, that student's account, but we need to close that sentence.
But you see, again, I may make this further, my concern, that student's account will be closed. Okay? You know, I don't want us to unintentionally close the account in its entirety.
Break. Senator Blas, do you have, do you have an amendment?
Break.
One minute recess. Committee on the whole is now back in session. Speaker Wapat, Senator Blas still has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, and, Mr. Chair, thank you for the recess. I'd like now to yield my, with regards to the proffer of the amendment to Senator Siniklas.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Siniklas, on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Starting from line 27, strike the words "further if" and begin the sentence with the word And if I can get indication from the clerk that she's okay for me to continue. Okay, now, and the next, strike the words on line 27, "is not," and replace it with the words "shall be." So that new sentence will read on line 27, "The student scholarship award shall be used." And then it's just a period after the word "school" on page five, line one, and strike everything thereafter up to line three.
Okay, can you please repeat the last phrase you just made?
A period after the word "school" on line one, page five, and then strike everything from lines one to three after that.
It's already adopted. Okay, there's an amendment by Senator Siniklas. Please ensure that we understand that Senator McCready's amendment still stands, is to delete the words on page four, line 27, "further if," and the sentence will begin, "The student's scholarship award," delete "is not," and insert "shall be used within one year," and then, based on Senator McCready's statements, all the way from, to the words "from high school," period, and then all the subsequent phrases after that on lines one to three is deleted, is being proposed to be deleted. On the amendment by Senator Siniklas, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Any further discussion on page four and transitioning into page five? Senator Rispio, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, on page four, on line 27, you know, the fund that's set up pursuant to this section, it says it shall be maintained in a separate bank account, it should not be co-mingled, it should not be subject to the governor's transfer authority. All those are very important. But also, what's also very important is on line 27, that talks about what happens when funds are not used and it remains with the fund, I think we should put in "and shall not lapse." So that way, it's very clear that this legislature, through this act, recognizes that any remaining balances shall just keep carrying over. And then who knows, at some point, this whole program can be revisited, and the $500 may be more than $500 to those individual accounts. So, if we don't do this provision, we all know that come October 1st, any money's in the account would just not be available for use. So I move to add the words "after fund" on line 27, "and shall not lapse."
On Senator Rispio's amendment, any discussion? No discussion? Any objections? No objections? So ordered. Thank you, Senator Rispio. Please ensure the clerk gets a copy of your amendment. Any, we've transitioned to page five, senators. Any discussions, amendments, or deletions on page five? Senator Tom Attia, you recognize.
I have a question on section 104, 107, down on line 24. We're calling for an independent evaluation shall be conducted. Now, when I read that, I guess, I take it that probably means we're going to have to go out and contract somebody to do this independent evaluation, which will be an additional cost. And to determine if the program has met its goals, one of which is to increase the number of graduates enrolled at UOG or GCC. Well, of course, the increase in enrollment at UOG or GCC can come from a number of things. Increase in population, a downturn in the economy, everybody, no jobs, so everybody goes to school. So I'm just concerned that we're going to incur this additional cost on, you know, on top of the annual audits that the OPA is going to be required to do, on top of the annual reporting requirements that's going to need to be submitted to the legislature and the governor. So, is that an expense that really is needed?
Senator Attia, we can have the sponsor of the legislation respond?
Yes, please.
Senator Underwood?
Mr. Chairman, the independent evaluation is really important, because we are investing quite a bit to meet specific goals. So, in order for us to determine whether there is an increase and whether that increase is really from the graduates, they have a tracking mechanism based on the information that they collect from those who register at the University of Guam and GCC. They would know which school they had graduated from and also what year they had graduated. So we would know clearly whether the enrollees that, that fall of 2019 were actually coming from the university or, I mean, from one of the public high schools. But in terms of costs, we have done program evaluation in the past, and the cost is actually minimal. We're saying external. This is something that perhaps the University of Guam can do as a research study for one of their classes. But also keep in mind that the funds have administrative costs that we are allowing them to use, and I would imagine that that would be something that we can draw from.
Thank you, Senator Underwood. Senator Attia, does that address your concern?
Well, I mean, that's fine. At least we've acknowledged the fact that there's going to be an additional cost, this will be an additional cost, and it's going to be counted against that 5% threshold that's being allowed for administrative costs. And that's fine. I, you know, I think the sponsor of the bill has explained quite well. But the other concern that I have is we're going to conduct this independent evaluation on the seventh year, and then, of course, we're going to, there's a sunset provision on the eighth year. Maybe this evaluation would be more appropriately done, like on the fifth year of the program. It would have had then, one, two, three, four, four classes that would have graduated to take advantage of this. So in other words, instead of waiting, you know, waiting up to the seventh year to find out that, hey, this thing really hasn't been having the impact, and then, of course, we're going to have the sunset provision that's going to terminate it anyway on the eighth year, unless legislation is enacted to authorize its continuation. But maybe we should, maybe that independent evaluation should be done earlier, at least a couple of years earlier, if we're really wanting to, I would think, by the fourth or the fifth year, then we would have gathered enough data to really take a look at the program. So I would just move that then, on line 25, we, that independent evaluation be conducted on the, on the fifth year of the enactment of this act.
Senator Attia has an amendment on line 25 to change the word, the number, word, seven, to the fifth year of the enactment of the act. On the amendment, Senator Underwood, you recognize.
Yes, I, you know what? The fourth year is the first disbursement of the scholarship. So... So if we're going to conduct an evaluation on the fifth year, we only would have had one cohort or one group of students enrolled.
Well, that's not clear, then, from the way I've been reading the bill, is that if we enact this today, when would the first pot of money be available, next year? I haven't read anything that it's gonna be, you know, the class of 2018?
Nineteen.
Senator Adda, would you like Senator Underwood?
Yeah, please.
Senator Underwood, please.
Yeah. That is, yes, that is a valid point. When we had, the original bill had, remember, had anticipated we were going to start with the ninth graders, and then it had evolved so that it would be any student graduating from the university, I mean, from one of the public schools. So now that we have that, we actually, in order for the funds to grow and in order for us to be able to afford to do so, we actually should indicate that the first graduate, the 2000, the graduates of 2019, I believe, or 2020. The graduates of, yeah, the graduates of 2019. And we probably need to take a couple of minutes to find that in our, yeah, in the bill, to insert that.
Senator Underwood, there's an amendment on the floor by Senator Adda to change it to fifth year. So are you objecting to the amendment?
I'm objecting to that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment by Senator Adda, Tom Adda, I'm sorry? Senator Blas, you recognize? On the proposed amendment?
You know, I can appreciate and I understand why, you know, the concern and the move made for the amendment. I have to agree with regards to this, assuming, the assumptions being, okay, it's the seventh year, or the, what the, my assumption, what I understand is gonna be the fifth year of when funds are being distributed, okay? That's, I'm going to go on the assumption that that's what we're gonna be moving to. That said, and I have to agree, that when you're gonna do the evaluation, if you're gonna do the evaluation on the seventh year, and then you're gonna have a sunset on the eighth year, you're really not giving yourself a whole lot of time to, you know, not just to conduct the study, to make the evaluation, but then to read it and to understand it, okay? And then, I don't still want us to rush, or I don't want future legislatures to rush to having to make a decision based on this. I think that I have to agree that if the assumption is that the evaluation is gonna be done on the fifth year that dispersments are made, that should give that, there's, then, you know, in the basis of what was brought up by the author of the legislation, that would have given five cohorts to go through, okay? On top of that, we've got, on top of the five cohorts, we're gonna have the next four years of basically advertising or, you know, talking about the program. So if in the next four years, we don't prepare the ninth graders today to go to college for years from now, we've done ourselves an injustice in trying to be able to make sure that this program is successful. So I have to agree with, you know, moving the evaluation, okay, to the fifth year as opposed to the seventh year.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. On the amendment by Senator Tom Adda, on page five, line 25, to change seventh year to fifth. On the amendment, any further discussion? Speaker Wapat, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I understand where our colleague is coming from, and having, of course, heard an explanation by the primary author, of course, is that, you know, after all, she was the administrator for statistics and, you know, at the Department of Labor, I mean, Department of Education. But when we do normally studies or evaluation of programs, one of the things you could do is you can do the evaluation mid-year, so you can, not mid-year, but mid the program, to see how you're progressing. But in this case, since, you know, the students are not going to really start until much later, then you, what you want to do then is to do the study after the first cohort has gone through, to see what the success rate of it. We're not evaluating anything really, but more the program itself. And the program is to incentivize, motivate, you know, encourage, inspire students to, you know, to go to GCC or UOG. So maybe, I think what will be best, really, than the fifth, but rather on that, a fourth year, because that's when you, already, right? When you get the data at that time, then that will, that will determine moving, how you're gonna move forward. So, and I don't know, of course, if how the mover of the amendment who wanted it from seven to fifth, and I'm saying that you wanna do it right at that time of the fourth cohort going into the university or GCC.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker Wapat. Senator Blas, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, you know, and I read the language too here. And really, if you look at the language, and I can see the arguments here. It does read here, "shall be conducted after the seventh year of the enactment of this act." Now, the enactment of this act is almost immediate. So it could basically be construed that it's the seventh year starting tomorrow, if that be necessary. That's not enough time for the cohort, for at least five cohorts to go through. So I think there has to be, first off, the acknowledgement and somewhere we, in order for it to be appreciated as to what its concerns are, of which my concerns are as well, is it, we have to, there has to be somewhere, language very clear, that, you know, the dispersments of any funds is not gonna happen till four years from now, okay? And then, the evaluation of that won't happen until five cohorts later, okay? So I think that, you know, the amendment proffered by the good senator from ago is, you know, opened up a wider spectrum of, to appreciate what it is. I think there has to be some changes to occur before that.
So noted, Senator Blas. On the amendment by Senator Tom Adda. We're still discussing that particular measure. Senator Adda, would you like to conclude your comments?
Well, I think then, given the fact that the author of the bill has clarified that dispersments of these scholarships do not begin until the class of 2019 comes of age, then I will withdraw this amendment so that to allow for another amendment to be made, clarifying when that first disbursement occurs, and then I can come back in and make that amendment, or it can be made at the same time.
So noted. Senator Tom Adda has withdrawn his amendment subsequent to further discussions. Any other issues, comments on page five amendments? Senator Siniklas, you recognize, page five.
I got it. I got it, Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just first to follow through with the statements made by Senator Adda. Unless you wish to guide us otherwise, but that would require us to go back to page three at this time?
Senator Siniklas, do me a favor if you can just hold that thought. And then, I did set some rules of engagement that we will revert back to any other pages because, in addition to your concern, there have been two other requests to revert back to previous pages. So please, if I can entertain your concern upon the conclusion of the...
Sure. I do have amendments for page five, though, Mr. Chairman.
You still have the floor, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then, just to address Senator Adda's concern, I do have an amendment that would address what he brought up on page three. So on page five, line eight, the word "appropriated", we addressed this yesterday, should be stricken through and replace with the word "funded." And the same would go for page, I mean, line 13 and line 16.
Okay. Can you, you repeat your amendment?
Page five, line eight.
Okay.
The word "appropriated" should be stricken, and it should be replaced with the word "funded."
Okay. Senator Siniklas has an amendment on line eight, line 13, and 16 to delete the word "appropriated" and replace it with "funded." On the amendment, any discussion? No discussion? Any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor.
And then on page five, line 24, as a good point raised by the retiring speaker as to how this independent evaluation is going to be paid for, I would like to add language on line 24 after the word "evaluation", place a comma, and add the words "paid for by the fund, comma." So we'll read, "An independent evaluation, paid for by the fund, shall be conducted after the seventh year."
On the amendment by Senator Siniklas, on page five, line 24, after the word "evaluation," insert comma, "paid for by the fund, comma," which, and then continue to read, "shall be conducted." On the amendment, any discussion? No discussion? Any objection? No objections? So ordered. Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor.
That's all I have for page five, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Siniklas. We will come back to you based on your request to revert back to page three after we concluded all the sections. Senator Underwood, on page five. Okay, senators, line eight, line 12, and line 16, delete the word, the number 2015, and insert 2016. On that amendment, any discussion? Senator Siniklas, on the proposed amendment?
So just so we understand, then, that means that we're not going to be expecting this to be funded until next year? So this program isn't going to be effective until next year?
That's correct.
Okay. It's just important to understand, because the language that I'm working on for page three, when it will be effective, we're looking at a four-year movement, a four-year time lapse. So we're talking about school year 2016, when dispersments will be available. Yes. 2020. Okay. So 2020 is the disbursement schedule now. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. On the amendment, to delete the word, the number 2015, and replace it with 2016. Senator Underwood? On the amendment proffered by Senator Underwood, any discussion? Any objection? No objections? So ordered. Senator Underwood, you still have the floor, on page five.
I just want to have, to clarify, that although the funds will be available in June 2016, that would be the beginning of, the first deposit to the fund would be June 2016. But we will start notifying the students about the program beginning fall of 2015. Because the funds actually will not be dispersed until, let's see, 16, 17, 18, 19, until the 19, 2019.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Underwood. Just FYI, Senator Siniklas has an amendment, or is gonna proffer an amendment on page three, addressing and clarifying your concern. Any further discussion on page five? No further discussion. We are transitioning to page six. Any discussion, deliberation, or amendments on page six? Senator Tom Adda, you recognize?
Clarify, then, is the sponsor of the bill gonna come back with an amendment to clarify that the first disbursement won't occur until about 2019?
If not clarified by Senator Underwood, it will be clarified by Senator Siniklas.
We'll be proffering language that would do that?
Yes. If not by the sponsor, then by Senator Siniklas, because they're both conversing on that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Adda. Senator Siniklas, on page six.
Yes, on page six, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just on line 15, that part there, we say, "DOE shall promulgate rules and regulations within 120 days of the enactment of this act." I just wanna make it very clear that the rules and regulations they're gonna be promulgating are to administer the provisions of this act. So they could just add language after the word "regulations" that states "to administer the provisions of this act." Because otherwise, we're just basically saying they're gonna promulgate rules and regs, but we're not saying for what exactly. So the DOE shall promulgate rules and regulations to administer the provisions of this act.
On the amendment by Senator Siniklas, on page six, line 15, right after the word "regulations," to insert the phrase, "to administer the provisions of this act," and then continue on with that particular verbiage. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, of this chapter, Mr. Chairman. "To administer the provisions of this chapter."
Of this chapter. Clarification, of this chapter. Any discussion? Any objection? No objections? So ordered. Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor, on page six.
That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other discussion on page six? If not, we're transitioning to, there's a request for one-minute recess. One-minute recess. One-minute recess. We're about ready to transition into afternoon, but Senator Espada, you're recognized on page six. We recessed because of concerns that were being waved down at me earlier. Okay. Any questions, comments, or deliberations on page, any further discussion on page six? If not, we're transitioning to page seven. Senators? Any questions, comments, or concerns, or amendments on page seven?
Page eight.
If not, anyone have any issues on page eight, section two?
I have one.
Speaker Wapat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much.
And which page?
Page eight, line three, if we can just delete "and" and make it "or" because it's either/or where the children would be attending.
So delete "and" on page eight, line three, insert, delete "and" between UOG and GCC and insert "or." On Speaker Wapat's amendment, any objection? No objections? So ordered. Senators, we've concluded our discussion on the first preview of the proposal. Now I will entertain any requests to revert back to specific pages. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
I was just wondering if we could go back to seven. There are two words that concern me. On line 16, "for the benefit of the account holder," account owner. I don't see legal. Do we need to keep that in?
Vice Speaker Cruz, do you have an amendment?
Line 16. "For the benefit of an account owner or designated beneficiary." It doesn't. But it's okay. Yeah. Can we just draw up account owner and just benefit of the designated beneficiary?
Okay. There's an amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz on page seven, line 16, to delete the words "account owner." And extend that to "or." Account owner or on line 16, page seven. Any discussion? Any objection? No objections? So ordered. Any other proposed amendments on any specific pages of Bill Number 35-33? The chair will now entertain reverting back to any pages for an amendment. We're not going to go page by page again in the second round. So Vice, Senator Siniklis, you're recognized on Bill 35-33.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could request a brief recess.
Three-minute recess. Okay. Okay, senators. We're about ready to transition into afternoon, but Senator Espada, you're recognized on page six. We recessed because of concerns that were being waved down at me earlier. Okay. Any questions, comments, or deliberations on page, any further discussion on page six? If not, we're transitioning to page seven. Senators? Any questions, comments, or concerns, or amendments on page seven?
Page eight.
If not, anyone have any issues on page eight, section two?
I have one.
Speaker Wapat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. On which page? Page eight, line three, if we can just delete "and" and make it "or" because it's either/or where the children would be attending.
So delete "and" on page eight, line three, insert, delete "and" between UOG and GCC and insert "or." On Speaker Wapat's amendment, any objection? No objections? So ordered. Senators, we've concluded our discussion on the first preview of the proposal. Now I will entertain any requests to revert back to specific pages. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
I was just wondering if we could go back to seven. There are two words that concern me. On line 16, "for the benefit of the account holder," account owner. I don't see legal. Do we need to keep that in?
Vice Speaker Cruz, do you have an amendment?
Line 16. "For the benefit of an account owner or designated beneficiary." It doesn't. But it's okay. Yeah. Can we just draw up account owner and just benefit of the designated beneficiary?
Okay. There's an amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz on page seven, line 16, to delete the words "account owner." And extend that to "or." Account owner or on line 16, page seven. Any discussion? Any objection? No objections? So ordered. Any other proposed amendments on any specific pages of Bill Number 35-33? The chair will now entertain reverting back to any pages for an amendment. We're not going to go page by page again in the second round. So Vice, Senator Siniklis, you're recognized on Bill 35-33.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could request a brief recess.
Three-minute recess. Good afternoon, senators. We're about ready to transition into afternoon, but Senator Espada, you're recognized on page six. We recessed because of concerns that were being waved down at me earlier. Okay. Any questions, comments, or deliberations on page, any further discussion on page six? If not, we're transitioning to page seven. Senators? Any questions, comments, or concerns, or amendments on page seven?
Page eight.
If not, anyone have any issues on page eight, section two?
I have one.
Speaker Wapat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. On which page? Page eight, line three, if we can just delete "and" and make it "or" because it's either/or where the children would be attending.
So delete "and" on page eight, line three, insert, delete "and" between UOG and GCC and insert "or." On Speaker Wapat's amendment, any objection? No objections? So ordered. Any other proposed amendments on any specific pages of Bill Number 35-33? The chair will now entertain reverting back to any pages for an amendment. We're not going to go page by page again in the second round. So Vice, Senator Siniklis, you're recognized on Bill 35-33.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could request a brief recess.
Good afternoon, senators. The committee in the hall is now back in session. Senator Tom Adda has consented to proceeding with our discussion. Any further discussion, amendments, or deliberations on Bill 35-33? Senator Espada, you're recognized.
Well, in light of that, we also need to look at section 14108 then because the way it presently reads is the initiative shall come to an end by the eighth year of its enactment. In other words, if we're not starting the payout. And I see, unless it's, so bottom line, we're saying that if we're not going to be paying out, if we're not paying out any scholarships until three or four years down the road, so we're only going through one full cycle, is what you're saying? Is it only four classes before this thing sunsets?
Senator Espada, I will entertain an amendment and then we can deliberate.
Well, then I got a question. That's the question I have then to the author of the bill.
Okay.
And that's the question. Is that the intent that you had going in, that you were only going to allow this to cover one full four years, four classes before we had to make a determination of whether we extend the program or not?
Senator Underwood, would you like to respond to the inquiry?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The intent was actually only three classes. And so, yes, that's the intent.
Well, then I have no amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Underwood. Thank you, Senator Espada. Any further discussion or deliberation on Bill Number 35-33 as amended by the committee in the hall? If not, we have concluded our discussion on this legislation. I will recognize the majority leader. Senator Orgerio, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. After concluding a very thorough and significant discussion relative to Bill Number 35-
So if the first disbursement is on 2019, okay, that's when that group graduates in, you know, that group, that school year 2018, 2019, so they actually will have their graduation ceremony in 2019. So then, a year after that, students would have come in to basically cash in on their scholarship, then we can go and do the evaluation. So should be then after the first year of, a year after the first disbursement. I would need to sit down and.
Okay, Senator Adda, if I can get your amendment and then we can discuss and deliberate on it. So if I can get your language, one-minute recess, please. Good afternoon, Senators. The Committee of the Whole is now back in session. Senator Tom Adda has consented to proceeding with our discussion. Any further discussion, amendments, or deliberations on Bill 35-33? Senator Espada, you recognize?
Well, in light of that, we also need to look at section 14108 then, because the way it presently reads is the initiative shall come to an end by the eighth year of its enactment. In other words, if we're not starting to pay out, and I see unless it's, so bottom line, we're saying that if we're not going to be paying out, if we're not paying out any scholarships until three or four years down the road, so we're only going through one full cycle, is what you're saying? Is it only four classes before this thing sunsets?
Senator Espada, I will entertain an amendment and then we can.
Well, then I got a question. That's the question I have then to the author of the bill.
Okay.
And that's the question, is that the intent that you had going in, that you were only going to allow this to cover one full, four years, four classes before we had to make a determination of whether we extend the program or not?
Senator Underwood, would you like to respond to the inquiry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The intent was actually only three classes. And so, yes, that's the intent.
Well, then I have no amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Underwood. Thank you, Senator Espada. Any further discussion or deliberation on Bill number 35-33 as amended by the Committee of the Whole? If not, we have concluded our discussion on this legislation. I will recognize the Majority Leader. Senator Orispecha?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. After concluding a very thorough and significant discussion relative to Bill number 35-33, as corrected by the prime sponsor, substituted by the Committee on Early Learning, Juvenile Justice, Public Education, and First Generation Initiatives, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, I move that we rise on this matter with the recommendation to pass and that all amendments made while in the Committee of the Whole that were adopted remain intact. And on behalf of the prime sponsor, I'm sure she wants to express her appreciation for the amount of time this body took to work through the mechanics of her bill, to preserve the intent that she wanted from the very beginning to provide this first-generation initiative. And so on that, Mr. Chair, I also thank the panel that was with us, representatives of all three institutions, Superintendent Fernandez, Dr. Robert Underwood, and Dr. Mary Okada, as well as the, as well as who else was, I'm sorry, the Department Administration Acting Director, Tony Blas, and the Acting Director of BBMR, Joey Cabo. So on that note, I move that we rise with the recommendation.
On the motion to suspend discussion and for the Committee of the Whole to report back to the main legislative, to the Speaker, no objections, so ordered.
The legislatures back in session. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on behalf of the Committee, I want to thank all of our colleagues for their patience and in working through probably one of the most important pieces of legislation we as a legislature are going to pass this term. And I'm very proud to report that the Committee of the Whole has deliberated and made substantial amendments to the bill, and we'd like to report it back to the legislature with the recommendation to do pass and so to place it into the voting file today.
On that motion, hearing no objections? So ordered. Thank you very much. The legislatures back in session. Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions for purposes of placing one item on the second reading file.
No objections? So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Under motions, I move that we place Resolution Number 2-33, sponsored by Senator Nicholas and its relative to respectfully requesting Congresswoman Braddalio to introduce legislation requiring that a general election intervene between enactment of a law to vary the compensation of the governor, lieutenant governor, and senators of the Guam Legislature and its implementation consistent with the 27th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. And the sponsor of this resolution, since its substantive, has conducted a public hearing, has provided a sponsor report, and a voting sheet has been circulated, and his recommendation on the sponsor's report is to pass. And so I move that this be placed in the second reading file.
On the motion, hearing objections? So ordered. Senator Nicholas, to move it?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a motion to place Resolution Number 2 on the third reading file.
On that motion, no objection? So ordered. Senator Orispecha, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Senator Nicholas. I move that we, notwithstanding the House rules, we go back, actually, we've exhausted everything in the second reading file. So I move that we recess.
Move us into the voting file.
Until, did you say four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Okay. I move that we recess till 4:00 p.m. today, at which time we would be expected to dispose of all matters in the voting file.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will recess until four o'clock this afternoon on the voting file.